Regular City Commission meeting, April 7th, 2025. Stand for the invocation by Pastor Marco Caballero, Forest Grove Baptist, and stay standing for the pledge, please.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you so much, Father, to be able, Father God, to call up your name here in this place. At the same time, Father God, I would like to pray for our Mayor Gil Kerper, Vice Mayor Edward Potts, Commissioner Shirley Green Brown, Commissioner Diana Williams, City Manager Maider Rosa, City Attorney Marian Roche. Heavenly Father, we pray for them. We pray, Father God, that you will use them in a mighty way here in our community. Give them wisdom, Father God, with all the decisions that they has to make. Father God, it is a great honor to live in this community. I am so blessed, Father God, that you put me in this place. Father God, it's just wonderful city to live, and I just thank you for these men and women that you established them as the men and women that do the business of our city, Father God. Thank you, Father God, for them. I pray for them and their families. I pray, Father God, that you will fill them up with wisdom and at the decisions that they has to make, Father God, that you will talk to them with a gentle voice, Father God, guide them, use them in such a way, Father. We love you, heavenly Father. We thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, who died on the cross for our sins. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you all for being here today. And also, if you have a cellphone or a phone, would you either turn it off or turn it down? And if you need to make a phone call, please step out in the lobby. Appreciate that very much. And we'd like to go ahead and get approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll pardon me, Items A, B, and C, under public hearings and ordinance, are being deferred to a date certain of April 21st, 2025.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone from the audience like to comment on the motion on the floor? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approve, reading of proposed ordinance and resolutions by Title Only.
Mr. Mayor, again, sorry to interrupt, but I just want, for the record, to state that that's a 4-0 vote. I just want to state, for the record, that that's a 4-0 vote.
Yes, I will. Commissioner Ringerson could not be here today, so for the record, it's a 4-0 vote. Approve of reading and proposed ordinance and resolution by Title Only.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Once again, for the record, 4-0 vote. We'd like to go ahead and go to special presentations. Erby Elementary School Student Artist Appreciation. Ms. Rose.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. City Manager, Madam City Attorney, Diana Mendoza, Assistant Deputy City Clerk. In recognition of the student artists, we are presenting art certificates to the students of Erby Elementary School, whose artwork was featured on display in the foyer at City Hall. The recommended action is for Mayor Kerper and Principal Tanya Floyd to present the certificates to the student artist, as Ms. Maginero could not make it today.
Just for the record, when you call out a kid's name, will you please come up and get these, and please stay up here, so the parents can click plenty of pictures.
All right, our first student, Luna Baron. Paisley Birmingham. Elias Gonzalez. Ava Goodman. Elliot Marata. McKinley Weiner. Aubrey Westbury. Julia Stout. Damani Presley. Amora Delgado. Lindsay Cash. Ren Buchanan. Joshua Combs. And our art teacher, Ms. Magarino, was unable to be here, but just so you know their artwork, these young artists have been studying monochromatic color theory and winter landscapes. And so they were able to create tints and shades to create a moon-lit winter sky. They also created a darker shade of the original hue to create winter pine trees topped by white snow caps. Our studies continued as we used the moon as a light source to cast shadows in the snow-covered ground.
These were absolutely beautiful. I mean, they were absolutely well done. Thank you. And we're going to get some pictures. Come on up and take pictures. Moms and dads, thank you very much. I know a lot of this enthusiasm comes from you and a good household, so thank you again very, very much. And you can also stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like. That's always fun, I gotta say that. With that, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney. I'm Vicki Floyd with the Alachua Police Department. Every year during the second week of April, the men and women who serve as public safety telecommunications, commonly referred to as dispatchers, are honored. This week-long event is a time to celebrate and thank those who dedicate their lives to serve in the community. This week is known as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Dispatchers are the calming voices that are heard on the other end of the call during an emergency. They are our first line of defense in protecting and keeping our officers and our citizens safe. In recognition of their significant contributions to the community, staff requests proclaiming the week of April 13th through the 19th, 2025, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the City of Alachua. The recommended action is for Mayor to read the proclamation declaring April 13th through the 19th, 2025, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week.
Whereas professional public safety telecommunications in the City of Alachua, Florida, play a crucial role in protection of life, property, and delivery of public service, public safety services, and whereas each day, City of Alachua, Florida, citizens call for help in emergency situations and telecommunications, who answers these calls for help gather essential information and dispatch the appropriate assistance, often making the difference between life and death for persons in need. And whereas these well-trained, highly dedicated, and deeply motivated individuals serve the citizens of the City of Alachua, Florida, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and during extreme situations such as hurricanes, are unable to be with their families and protect their own personal homes and property. Whereas these telecommunications often do not receive recognitions for them by their citizens and agencies who depend on them and the benefit from their services. Whereas the Congress of the United States has proclaimed the support and recognition of these employees and their profession, and the City of Alachua, Florida Commission wishes to publicly recognize telecommunications who are served by citizens, who serve the citizens of Alachua, Florida, in such a professional manner. Now therefore, I give Kerper Mayor of the City of Alachua, Florida, representing the City and City Commission, to hereby proclaim April 13th through the 19th, 2025, is National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Thank you all very much. And if anyone would like to come up and say anything, you're more than welcome. Do you have anything else to say?
Mr. Chair? Are they here? Could they come up for a picture, please? And thank you for your service.
I'd like to go to Item C, Water Conservation Month Proclamation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and Madam City Attorney, when she returns. This year marks the 27th year that April has been established as Water Conservation Month in Florida. Once again, the five water management districts, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and the American Water Works Association are teaming up to promote April as Water Conservation Month. Given these 27 years, we have made great strides toward understanding the impacts of water efficiency and water conservation programs. By adopting April as Water Conservation Month and adding our proclamation to the statewide list, we are letting Florida's legislators, elected officials, know just how important water efficiency and water conservation practices are to local government and water utilities in Florida. The recommended action is for Mayor Kerper to read the proclamation.
Thank you. Whereas water is basic and essential need for every living creature, and whereas the State of Florida Water Management District and the City of Alachua are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation, and whereas City of Alachua and the State of Florida have designated April typically a dry month when water demands are most acute, Water, Florida Water Conservation Month is educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources. And whereas the City of Alachua has always encouraged and supported water conservation through various educational programs and special events, whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference when it comes to conserving water, and whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can help by saving water and promote a healthy economy and community. Now therefore, I give Kerper Mayor of the City of Alachua, representing the City and the City Commission, to hereby proclaim April 2025 as Water Conservation Month. Thank you again.
Thank you.
I'd like to go to the first round of comments from citizens on subject choice now down the agenda. If you will have a round two at the end of the meeting, so if you'd like to say something, please come up and state your name for the record. Committee reports appointment of the Youth Advisory Council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, City Attorney, excuse me. The Youth Advisory Council has one seat vacant. The details of the appointment are in your packet. The city has received one application, Abigail B. Carville. The applicant has been advised that the commission will consider the item and has been invited to attend the meeting. I'll call her forward if she is here and if you wish to speak from her. Yes? Abigail? Okay, she's not here. Okay, I will administer the ballot process. This is a yes/no vote. Abigail Carville has received four of four votes. The recommended action is to appoint one member, Abigail, to the Youth Advisory Council with a term beginning September 26th, 2024, and expiring on September 4th, 2026.
Well, we thank you for wanting to volunteer. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, also move to appoint one member, Abigail, to the Youth Advisory Council with a term beginning September 26th, 2024, and expiring September 4th, 2026.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Anyone from the audience like to comment on the motion on the floor? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's a 4-0 vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
In public hearings and ordinances, Item A, B, and C have been deferred to a later date, and so we go to Item D, Ordinance 2506.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the First String of Ordinance 25-06, an ordinance of the City of Alachua, Florida, relating to the small-scale amendment of the City of Alachua Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, amending the future land use map classification of A on approximately 5.07 acre subject property from agriculture to rural slash agriculture and county to commercial, located at 16313 Northwest US Highway 441, tax partial numbers 03044-001-002 and 03044-002-000, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing severability, and providing an effective date. This is the First String of Ordinance 25-06 of the City of Alachua by Title Only.
Yeah, sure. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager and City Attorney, Carson J. Crockett, planner with the City of Alachua Planning and Community Development Department. My resume is on file in the office of the Deputy City Clerk. This item is a legislative request by Allocate Acquisitions LLC, applicant and agent on behalf of Browning Family Revocable Trust and Santa Fe Hills Church of Christ Incorporated, the property owners, to amend the future land use from agriculture and agriculture county to commercial on an approximately 5.07 acre subject property located at 16313 Northwest US Highway 441. The subject property consists of primarily cleared lands with a religious institution and some naturally wooded areas. The applicant has submitted a companion application for a site-specific amendment to the official zoning atlas, further referred to as a rezoning, which proposes to amend the zoning of the subject property from agricultural county and administrative and professional county to community commercial CC. That companion rezoning item will be covered later in tonight's meeting agenda. Here we have an overview of the subject property and the black-and-white hatched border in the center of the map, north being the top of the map. Running north-south here is County Road 235A, also known as Northwest 173rd Street. Running east-west along the other property boundary is US Highway 441. For reference, over here, we have Santa Fe Ford, and over here, we have the Santa Fe High School. Across the street, but not shown in the aerials, the aerials not the most up-to-date, would be the new Wawa development. At this point, just to address that the community and planning, sorry, the Planning and Community Development Department did receive a public comment letter with questions regarding the actual size and acreage of the land subject here tonight. After further investigation, it appears that the applicant's survey is the correct number we're going off of. The Planning and Community Development Department staff did do a quick analysis using GIS tools and discovered that the property appraisers listed acreage appears to be a typo, listed at 3.08 for one of the parcels when it should be listed at 3.8. As referenced in the overview, the existing future land use designations of the site are agriculture and agriculture county, which I will now give a brief overview of. The purpose of the agriculture future land use category is to maintain agriculture operations within the city limits, as well as preserve the rural character and small-town charm of Alachua. The category permits up to 0.2 dwelling units per acre in a floor area of 0.5. Typical uses include single-family detached dwelling units, supporting community services, agriculture production and education, animal husbandry, care and sales, and horticulture, though this is not an all-inclusive list. The remaining portion of the subject property that is designated as agriculture county is as such due to the recent annexation of the property. No development can occur on that portion of the subject property until a City of Alachua future land use category is designated on the site. Here's an overview again of the subject property, but this time with our future land use map. The green is the city agriculture designation, the purple would be the county's agriculture designation, red is the municipal boundary of the city. These parcels are in the county and therefore do not appear with a color on our future land use map. Adjacent to the west is commercial, across 441 is commercial, category, sorry, catty corner across 235A and US 441 is also commercial, and to the east, where we have Santa Fe High School, is public. The proposed amendment would designate the entire subject property under the commercial future land use category, the purpose of which is to provide for general commercial uses as well as more intense commercial and highway commercial uses. This is the land use category in which large-scale regional commercial uses may locate. The commercial future land use category permits up to 15 dwelling units per acre and a floor area ratio of 0.85 units per acre. In total, there would be a net increase of 75 dwelling units permitted going from 1 to 76, and a net increase of approximately 104,740 square feet of non-residential, going from 82,981 square feet to 187,721 non-residential square feet permitted on the subject property. Once again, here's that subject property, still in the black-and-white hatched border, but with the proposed commercial future land use designation.
Can I ask you a question? Because is the church, the actual church there involved in that?
The church is the property owner, and they have given their agency to the applicant.
So their building will be commercial also?
I can't speak to what the future development of that site would be. We're solely talking about the future.
But the property they're on is going to be commercial?
It would be amended to be commercial. The church's property is the longer side here.
Thank you.
Yes. The purpose of a neighborhood meeting is to educate the owners of nearby land and any other interested members of the public about the project and to receive comments regarding the project. Neighborhood meetings are not required for small-scale comprehensive plan amendment applications. However, the applicant did hold a neighborhood work, or meeting for the companion rezoning application and covered this small-scale comprehensive plan amendment application as well. A meeting was held on September 25th, 2024, however notice was deemed by staff to be insufficient, and an additional neighborhood meeting was held February 18th, 2025, to correct the deficiency. Materials submitted by the applicant indicate that the meeting was attended by six members of the public. A neighborhood meeting summary is available for your review in the application materials. Chapter 163.3177 of the Florida statutes requires the future land use element of a comprehensive plan to provide land for a balance of uses, and that allows for the operation of real estate markets to provide adequate choices for permanent and seasonal residence and business. The comprehensive plan must provide land to accommodate at least a 10-year planning period. The applicant has submitted materials contending that the amendment from agriculture to commercial increases development potential and poses numerous potential benefits, including providing additional options for commercial business and employment for the city's growing population. They also contend that as demand for additional goods, services, and offices increase conveniently located commercial development options will be vital to meet that demand. While the agriculture future land use category limits the subject property to agricultural and limited residential uses, the applicant contends that the commercial uses allowed, if this amendment were to be approved, are a much better use of the subject property located at a busy intersection in the city's corporate corridor activity center. A full needs analysis has been included in the staff report. Chapter 163.3177 of Florida statutes also requires any amendment to the future land use element to discourage the proliferation of urban sprawl. Subsection 6A9 identifies 13 primary urban sprawl indicators and eight urban form criteria. An amendment to the future land use map is presumed to not be considered urban sprawl if it meets four of those eight urban form criteria. An evaluation of the 13 primary urban sprawl indicators and eight urban form criteria has been provided in the staff report. No primary indicator raised concerns, and the amendment meets at least four of the eight urban form criteria, and as such, staff concluded that the proposed amendment does not constitute urban sprawl. The application has been reviewed for consistency with the city's comprehensive plan. Specific goals, objectives, and policies that support the application can be found in the future land use, transportation, community facilities, and conservation and open space elements. You may notice a small asterisk on the transportation element that is regarding specifically Road Segment 6 and the projected trips demand. Excuse me. However, a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment is not a final development order and capacity is not reserved as part of it. Should a future development application be submitted for the property, concurrency will be evaluated, including Segment 6, and if the level of service is still exceeded, then the final development order must address those impacts generated from that future development, not the preliminary development order. This amendment in and of itself will not negatively impact the level of service standard of any public facilities. Although it stood, staff has concluded that the proposed amendment is consistent with the City of Alachua comprehensive plan. An evaluation of those specific goals, objectives, and policies is included in the staff report. And just for visualization's sake, Segment 6 is the portion of US 441 And just for visualization's sake, segment six is the portion of US four forty-one that runs between County Road two thirty-five A, running north-south here, to I seventy-five interchange here. So it's this segment running east-west. An environmental conditions analysis was conducted and the findings included in the staff report. There are no concerns for the environmental features listed here on the screen. Although the property is located in a car-sensitive area, there are no known sinkholes to exist. However, a geotech report may be required as part of future development applications. On March eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, the Planning and Zoning Board voted four to zero to transmit the application to the City Commission with a recommendation to approve. Staff recommends that the City Commission find the small-scale comprehensive plan amendment for Browning Family Revocable Trust and Santa Fe Hills Church of Christ Incorporated to be consistent with the City of Alachua comprehensive plan. And one, approve ordinance twenty-five oh six upon first reading, and two, schedule second and final reading for April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. At this time, I'm available to answer any questions the board may have regarding this presentation. I'm unsure if the applicant, oh, they're right there. All right, the applicant and agent is present, uh, for any questions as well.
It is. Would the applicant like to say anything?
Yes, good evening. Chris Blerton, Interplan LLC, two twenty East Central Parkway, Altamont Springs, Florida. Uh, I don't have a whole lot to add. This is one of the more straightforward rezonings and comp plan amendments that I've had the pleasure of working on. Uh, it obviously requires regardless, uh, to be developed, because of the differing county zonings and county land uses being carried over from one of the annexations, it has to have a comp plan amendment and a rezoning. I think most reasonably people would probably agree that at this busy intersection surrounded on three sides really with commercial development, uh, intensive commercial rezoning, and on the other side by a public high school, a major public high school, uh, the commercial makes the most sense here at this intersection and within the corporate corridor along US four forty-one. So if the commission does have any questions, I'm here to help answer them.
Questions or comments? There's a, um, behind there on, can you bring up the, uh, picture of the showing the different parties around it? All right, write that one, write it. On the cul-de-sac, you know, to the left. That, um, I know two of the owners that are in that back corner right there. To the, you know, the back corner right there? And that backs up to that piece of property. And just out of curiosity, you know, if you want to think a little bit differently sometimes, is that that might be a ingress and egress for them instead of getting out on a bit, a busier highway or something like that? And I'd be glad to get the names for you and everything like that, but I, I, just as an idea of safety and everything else like that, I don't think it would be a bad idea just to talk about it.
Yeah, if you could pass along their names and contact information to Mr. Crockett, he could, he could forward it to me.
Yeah.
We could look into that, sure.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? You have anything else to say, Mr. Crockett? What's your pleasure, Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, I move that based upon the competent substantial evidence, the presentation before this commission and staff's recommendation, uh, that this commission finds the application for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment for Browning Family Revocable Trust and Santa Fe Hills Church of Christ Incorporated to be consistent with the City of Alachua comprehensive plan and approve ordinance twenty-five dash zero six upon first reading and schedule second and final reading of ordinance twenty-five dash zero six for the April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five City Commission meeting.
We have a motion on the floor?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Would anyone from the audience like to comment on the motion on the floor? Please state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Soria Lindberg. I'm the one that sent the letter with the discrepancy with, we noticed, so thanks for... Oh, I just want to say thank you for clarifying. I guess the tax collector all these years had three point zero.
Would you, would you address us, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You gotta listen to what you have to say.
Oh, okay. First time. Um, yeah, so the tax collector had the property as three point oh eight, but then Carson clarified that it was a typo and it's three point eight, so I guess all these years the, paying one acre less a tax. So thank you for clarifying that in this meeting. I also was not able to attend the neighborhood meeting noted because, uh, the mail I saw in the documents was addressed to the old tenant, so I'm glad there's a place we can talk about here. And, um, I do hope that the next one is approved because granted, it is in a commercial corridor where everything around it is commercial. It is the only corner where there's people living behind it. There's four-year-olds riding their bike, there's teenagers on scooters, so hopefully whatever goes in there is not too disruptive because the Wawa is just grass. You got Elianos and the fire department, police department, there's no one living behind there. So the concern in the neighborhood is that it's a little, could be a little disruptive, but we're going to trust that the process here and the due process will make everything, um, approved in a way where it's nothing is too tall or too loud. Um, we're also at a bit of a hands behind our back because we can't vote when it comes to things because our neighborhood is unincorporated. I guess I bought a house in a little neighborhood that had a long history, I found about later. So, um, just the comment that thank you for clarifying the space and also there, when you put up the map, there is a little bypass between the development and the neighborhood. So I hope there is, um, when it comes to site plans and construction, that that piece of land is preserved. There's also very tall oak trees that could provide privacy and, um, more of like an isolation, and I also love walking outside of my house and seeing all the trees. Oh, cool, it's like Star Trek.
You got fifty-six seconds, though.
You got it, so, yeah, and I know I can, to happy on April twenty-first, so having it be community commercial and minding that it is the only corner with a neighborhood behind it. Um, lots of high schoolers cross the street, kids walk around, the other ones are more industrial, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to comment on the motion on the floor?
Good evening, all, Rudy Rothside. Thank you. I, um, the rugs look great in here, the new carpet. On the, on this topic, I, um, I, I, I think about the, the traffic in that area. I coach in high springs, uh, soccer, uh, a couple days a week, and every day I have, um, parents texting me saying, "The traffic in Alachua was horrible, I can't get through, it's going to take me, I'm going to be late, I'm going to be late, I'm going to be late." No problem, doesn't bother me, you know, we'll, we'll make it up the way we can, uh, for the, for the parents. But, uh, you know, let's think about, yes, I understand everything around there is commercial and, uh, it is logical to form that as a commercial. I think what the, um, last person said was very apropos about, that was the one section that has a, um, neighborhood behind it, and I hope those concerns are addressed. And... But I just think about the traffic in that area. It is, it is not a, uh, it's not a, it's not a fun section of, of our town to go through, and more and more people are using back and side roads. And, um, I've known in my life, uh, three, three people that I've gone to school with that were killed at that intersection. Uh, one of them was one of my best friends in high school. And I just hope that, you know, traffic is, you know, deaths happen, accidents happen, but, you know, we need to make sure that we are protecting our citizens and traffic is, is becoming a major issue in our area. It's backing up more and more. There's, at that five o'clock, it's, it's from, it's from, we don't even have Chick-fil-A there yet. Think of how many thousands of people are going to get off to go to Chick-fil-A alone, let alone all the, an extras, you know, all the other developments going on, so. I'd just like us to all look at the big picture. What's our goal? How many people do, how many, how many people, what's our goal for our city? We're, we're currently at forty-five hundred added homes. That's going to double our, over double our population. You know, that's going to add stress to our infrastructure and everything that way. So let's, let's look at the big picture of what we want to have in our city as having a, uh, what was it saying, what did it say? A small-town charm was in our thing, small-town charm. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just, uh, want to say too, with I seventy-five and four forty-one, ninety, over ninety percent of the traffic that comes through our community is from a different area, not the City of Alachua. If we put a fence around the City of Alachua, there would be no traffic problem, and I, we cannot do that. We can't keep people from not using four forty-one and I seventy-five. I realize it does get crowded, and as Florida grows, it's probably going to get a little more crowded, and I, I want, uh, not that it's a good thing or a bad thing, I just understand that we try and get to where, uh, people, the, the jobs that are here, they need homes too, and we like to, we don't have to supply every one of them, but we'd like to supply some of them, and I appreciate that very much. All right, we have, anyone else like to comment on the motion on the floor? Mr. Shirley Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Once again, uh, for the record, that's a four-o vote. We'd like to go on to item E. As a quasi-judicial hearing, if you plan on speaking on this, please stand up and raise your hand to be sworn in.
Please raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and, and read the, uh, ordinance by title only. This is the reading of ordinance twenty-five dash zero seven in ordinance of the City of Alachua, Florida, relating to the site-specific amendment to the official zoning atlas of the City of Alachua, amending the official zoning atlas for a, uh, approximately five point oh seven acre subject property from agriculture, uh, A in the county to commercial CC, located, uh, at one six three one three Northwest US Highway four forty-one, tax parcel number zero three zero four four dash zero zero one dash zero zero two, and zero three zero four four dash zero zero two dash zero zero zero. Repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing severability and providing an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-five dash oh seven, the City of Alachua by title only, and, um, our, uh, staff member will give a brief introduction, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager and City Attorney, Carson J. Crockett again, Planner with the City of Alachua Planning and Community Development Department. My resume is on file in the office of the Deputy City Clerk, and I've been sworn in. Uh, this item is a quasi-judicial request by ALK acquisitions LLC. This is the companion request to the item we just heard, which was the small-scale comprehensive plan amendment. Before we begin the rest of the procedures, I would like to incorporate by reference the presentation and public comment from the previous item. So it's a request by ALK acquisitions LLC on behalf of Browning Family Revocable Trust and Santa Fe Hills Church of Christ Incorporated to amend the zone district from agricultural A county and administrative and professional AP county to community commercial on an approximately five point oh seven acre subject property located at one six three one three Northwest US Highway four forty-one.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, before we go any further, because this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, I would like to briefly foredire the, um, uh, members on the, uh, dais. This question will be directed to each of the members, and it is to ask if they have received any other information, um, other than that what has been provided by the Planning Department or presented at this, uh, meeting in regard to ordinance twenty-five dash zero seven. That question is first to Commissioner Brown?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Potts?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Williams?
No, ma'am.
And Mr. Mayor?
No.
Thank you. Now if there's any presentation by the applicant?
No, I do not. Any questions, please, please let me know. I do not, but no, if you have any questions, again, I'm here to answer them. Uh, I appear there might be a little basketball game later that people might be interested in going to see, so I don't want to keep anybody here later, later than we have to.
So anybody from there? Dais here like to make any questions that you maybe didn't get to do at the first one?
Okay, and, and again, Mr. Mayor, because this is a quasi-judicial, judicial hearing, um, we are going to make a, a distinction between affected parties and non-affected parties, and I will read this quickly. An affected party is any person who will suffer an adverse effect to a property interest from the proposed application for development permit, including interests related to health, safety, densities, intensities, traffic conjunction, congestion, environmental impacts, aesthetic impacts, and similar effects. The alleged adverse interest may be shared in common with other members of the community at large, but must exceed and degree the general interest in community good shared by all persons. Any person who has land adjacent to the land subject to an application for development permit is an affected party. Anyone claiming to be an affected party should come to the microphone, identify themselves, state they've been sworn in, and explain how they're an affected party. Also, if you are not an affected party, you will still have the opportunity to address the commission during the public comment section of this presentation. So if there's anyone who's a affected party, if they would come to the microphone, please. Okay, there's no one who believes that they're an affected party? Okay. Then staff could proceed with their presentation.
Thank you. Uh, Carson J. Crockett again, Planner with the City of Alachua Planning and Community Development Department. As stated at the top of this, uh, item on the agenda, this is a quasi-judicial request by ALK acquisitions LLC applicant and agent on behalf of Browning Family Revocable Trust and Santa Fe Hills Church of Christ Incorporated, the property owners, to amend the zone district from agricultural A county and administrative and professional AP county to community commercial CC on an approximately five point oh seven acre subject property located at one six three one three Northwest US Highway four forty-one. The subject property consists of primarily cleared lands with a religious institution and some naturally wooded areas, and this is the companion item to the previous agenda item for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment. Here again, we have that same vicinity map as before with the black and white hatch border showing the, uh, subject property, north being the top of the map, two thirty-five A still running north-south, US four forty-one still running east-west. The current zoning designation of the property is a mix of agricultural A county and administrative and professional AP county. Uh, no development can occur on the subject property until City of Alachua Zone District is designated on the site. Uh, here we have the same subject property and vicinity map with the, uh, current zoning. The lighter purple is the agricultural portion county, and the darker purple is the AP portion county administrative and professional. Uh, directly adjacent to the west is commercial intensive CI. Directly across the street, uh, where the Wawa located is also CI, catty corner CI. Uh, adjacent, or across the street to the east, I should say, is Santa Fe High School, and it retains an agricultural A city zone district. Uh, again, this is the municipal boundary, and as such, it is excluded from the official zoning atlas. As was mentioned in the previous presentation, and we incorporated that presentation here, uh, this little white space here between the municipal boundary and the other properties with a zone district is a right-of-way, not part of the subject property. The proposed amendment would designate the entire subject property as community commercial, the purpose of which is to provide for lands for business uses that provide goods and services to residents of the entire community. Because these commercial uses are subject to public view, they should provide appropriate appearance, adequate parking, controlled traffic movement, suitable landscaping, appropriate pedestrian facilities, and protect abutting residential areas from adverse impacts. Excuse me. The CC district should typically be located along major arterials or at the intersection of an arterial and highway. Community commercial permits up to zero dwelling units per acre and a floor area ratio of zero point seven five. In total, there would be a net decrease of one dwelling unit permitted from one to zero, and a net increase of approximately one hundred sixty-five thousand six hundred thirty-six square feet. Zero from, sorry, zero to one hundred sixty-five thousand six hundred thirty-six square feet of non-residential permitted on the subject property. Note that these allowances are lower than the commercial future land use category allowances, and this is due to the recent comprehensive plan amendment regarding mixed-use future land use categories. However, it has yet to be implemented into the land development regulations at this time, so we're still using the current land development regulations of an FAR of zero point seven five and dwelling use per acre of zero. and dwelling use per acre of zero. Once again, here's that subject property, this time with the proposed zone district. You'll notice it's a lighter pink to designate community commercial versus the adjacent CI. It should act as a bit of a step down going from the more intense CI towards the residential rather than having CI but directly up to our municipal boundary and the residential The purpose of a neighborhood meeting is to educate the owners of nearby land and any other interested members of the public about the project and to receive comments regarding the project. A meeting was held on September 25th, 2024. However, notice was deemed by staff to be insufficient, and an additional neighborhood meeting was held February 18th, 2025 to correct the deficiency. All property owners within 400 feet of the subject property were notified, and notice of the meeting was published in a newspaper of general circulation. Materials submitted by the applicant indicate that the meeting was attended by six members of the public. A neighborhood meeting summary is available for your review in the application materials. The application has been reviewed for consistency with the city's comprehensive plan. Specific goals, objectives, and policies that support the application can be found in the future land use, transportation, community facilities, and conservation open space elements. Uh, the same asterisk for the transportation element as with the previous presentation. I'll go into more detail in that when we get to the public facilities impact analysis. Staff has concluded that the proposed amendment is consistent with the city of Alachua comprehensive plan. An evaluation of the specific goals, objectives, and policies is provided within the staff report. Here again is that map for segment six. Again, it's this portion of 441 that runs between 235A at this intersection and the interchange at I-75, segment six right there. But again, I'll cover that more in the public facilities section. An environmental conditions analysis was conducted, and the findings included in the staff report. There are no concerns for the environmental features listed here on the screen. However, that same note regarding carst sensitivity, uh, also applies. A geotech report may be required as part of future development applications. Section 2.4.2 E1 of the city's land development regulations establishes the standards with which all site-specific amendments to the official zoning atlas must be found compliant, listed here on the screen. The application has been reviewed for compliance with the applicable standards with a full analysis in the staff report, but I'll now briefly go through each of those items. Consistent with the comprehensive plan. An analysis of the application's consistency with the city of Alachua comprehensive plan is included in the staff report, and we've already gone over that here in this presentation. The application has been found to be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. Consistent with ordinances. An analysis of the application's compliance with the city of Alachua land development regulations is included in the staff report. It's what we're currently going through now in the presentation. Uh, the proposed amendment is not in conflict with any applicable requirements of the city's code of ordinances. Logical development pattern. The proposed amendment would result in a logical development pattern. The proposed amendment would provide a transitionary zone district from the more intense commercial intensive or CI district to the south and west of the subject property, towards the less intense agricultural A district to the north and east, stepping down the intensity of development while providing for a logical continuation of business uses compatible with the adjacent properties. Premature development. The subject property is located within an urban area of the city, proximate to existing residential and non-residential uses. Lands adjacent to the south and west contain pre-existing business, land uses, and lands adjacent to the east contain pre-existing institutional uses. Additionally, the subject property is located at the intersection of US Highway 441 and County Road 235A, a principal arterial roadway and major collector roadway respectively. Future development of the property would not create premature development in an undeveloped rural area. Incompatible with adjacent lands. The proposed amendment would provide a transitionary zone district from the more intense commercial intensive district to the south and west of the subject property, towards the less intense agricultural A district to the north and east, stepping down that intensity of development while providing for a logical continuation of business uses compatible with the adjacent properties. Based on the surrounding zone districts and adjacent land uses, the uses permitted by the proposed amendment would be compatible with the uses permitted by the zone district classification of adjacent lands. Adverse effect on local character. The community commercial district is stated to typically be located along major arterials or at the intersection of an arterial and highway. The subject property is located at the intersection of US Highway 441 and County Road 235A, a principal arterial roadway and major collector roadway respectively. Additionally, the city's land development regulations provide for protections from infill development, including residential protection standards. The amendment itself would not create excessive traffic, density and/or intensities or use, excuse me, of use, building height and bulk, noise, lights, or other physical effects or nuisances. Um, at the time of a site plan or other development application, we would review for compliance with Article 6 development standards, which would cover most of those items. Not deviate from pattern of development. The uses permitted by the proposed amendment are primarily business uses, and the community commercial district is a business zone district. Lands to the south and west are in the commercial intensive district, which is also a business district that permits similar uses as the proposed amendment. Additionally, the subject property is located at the intersection of US Highway 441 and County Road 235, a principal arterial roadway and major collector roadway. Encourage sprawl. The proposed amendment has been evaluated against policy 13F of the city's comprehensive plan future land use element. Additionally, the companion small-scale comprehensive plan amendment application has been evaluated against the 13 primary urban sprawl indicators and the eight urban form criteria in section 163.31776A9A Florida statutes, with the findings included in the application staff report. Staff has concluded that the proposed amendment does not constitute urban sprawl. Spot zoning. The proposed amendment would, excuse me, again, would have that transitionary zone district. It would incorporate and extend out the business districts. It would not, uh, be considered spot zoning, or an isolated zone district. Public facilities. The subject property is located within the community wastewater service area and the community potable water service area, and any future development on the subject property will be required to connect to these services. Additionally, the subject property is located at that major intersection, uh, so no roadway extensions would be necessary. No adverse effect on the environment. Environmental conditions analysis has been included in the staff report. The proposed amendment would not result in any significantly adverse impacts to any environmental features. Additionally, future development of the subject property must comply with the environmental protections established in the city of Alachua comprehensive plan and land development The application has been evaluated for concurrency and potential impacts to public facilities, including traffic, potable water, sanitary sewer, solid waste, drainage, recreation, and public schools. As noted earlier in this, in this presentation, development of the property has the potential to degrade the level of service of road segment six. As required by section 2.4.14 of the city's land development regulations, the deficiencies must be addressed in the final development order prior to issuing a certificate of concurrency compliance. Again, this is a preliminary development order for informational purposes. It does not reserve concurrency on the roadway. This application in and of itself does not degrade the level of service as it is a preliminary development order, and concurrency will not be reserved. Impacts will be reevaluated at the time of future development applications and final development orders. There we go. Uh, on March 11th, 2025, the Planning and Zoning Board voted four to zero to transmit the item to the city commission with a recommendation to approve. Staff recommends that the city commission find the site-specific amendment to the official zoning atlas for Browning Family Revocable Trust and Santa Fe Hills Church of Christ Incorporated to be consistent with the city of Alachua comprehensive plan and in compliance with the city's land development regulations. And one, approve ordinance 2507 upon first reading, and two, schedule second and final reading for April 21st, 2025. At this time, I'm available to answer any questions the commission may have, and the applicant is also still available if you have any additional questions of them.
Questions or comments, commissioners? Questions by the applicant, or the applicant? Would you like to say anything? Okay. Uh, questions from affected parties? With that, I need a quest for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that based upon the competencies, substantial evidence, the presentation before this commission and staff's recommendation, this commission finds the application for a site-specific amendment to the official zoning atlas for Browning Family Revocable Trust and Santa Fe Hills Church of Christ Incorporated to be consistent with the city of Alachua comprehensive plan and in compliance with the city's land development regulations. And one, approve ordinance 25-07 upon first reading, and two, schedule second and final reading of ordinance 25-07 for the April 21st, 2025 city commission meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Would anyone from the audience like to comment on the floor? And if you do, please, uh, first in support of application, and second, those opposed to the application. Any speakers come to the microphone, state your name, and that they have been sworn in. Have you been sworn in?
My name's Tamara Robbins, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner's staff attorney. Um, could it be made clear again, because I'm assuming you all are very clear about what could actually be built on that property, based on what's happening? Y'all know exactly what can happen to that property when they... I'm thinking y'all are, because you're going to vote on it, right? So you know what can happen there. It backs up, there's a, there's residential property there. Um, I mean, for example, the, the development up there, the Holiday Inn Express, how that backs up to the neighborhood behind it? I don't know if any of you have ever driven up there and looked at the house that's behind the, the Holiday Inn Express? Like, if you're at that property, you're looking up at the fourth floor of the Holiday Inn Express, it's like right there. That is bad planning. So I just want you all to make it clear to me and everyone here that you understand exactly what can be built if you're going to approve this rezoning and all these changes, because you're always doing it, of what can happen to that property, um, that's going to impact that corner, getting in and out of there safely with a school right there and like thousands of semi trucks making that turn every day. Um, and then all the residential traffic that apparently doesn't live here, they're just, we just have to accommodate them to drive through the community. So that's the reason to just pretend that we just don't have any control over that. Um, so I just would like to have the planner, someone lay out exactly what all those, um, criterias meant, because it said community commercial, and then there were conditions like it said about the, um, provide appropriate appearance, um, parking, controlled traffic, suitable landscaping, appropriate pedestrian facilities, protect abut, uh, abutting residential areas from adverse impacts. What does that mean? Y'all know what that means? Just wondering, they're your LDRs, there are LDRs. Y'all know what all those details mean? Because I don't. And I would like to understand them better, so if someone up there, someone in the room could explain what those, what the community commercial, this proposed zone district, what those criterias would look like? Because we never have any maps up there of like, okay, here's a blank piece of property with some, there's like open land, and here's what, I mean, you have AI all over the place. People can like create generated visuals. What, what would it look like? What could be there? What would the traffic flow look like? How are you going to impact this community? It's all just like words. Words. And what we're talking about is real-life stuff that's changing the community, and you make these massive changes every time you're in his room, and it's based on like language, and now it's gone. There's no map up there to even reference. And it's just on, on language. Do you really understand? Can you grasp? Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, the white area right there, I mean, that's county residential. I mean, how are you going to get into this property? It's long, you can't get into it from the back, it's residential. What can go there, and what does it actually look like? It's not going to look like a purple box. That is not what it looks like. Right? You are making changes that will allow that purple box to actually become something real that is going to impact the people that live around it, the children that go to the school, and the people that drive through this community every day. And you make these big decisions based on like purple boxes and hashtag lines. Do you really understand what you're doing? Because I really would like to know, because you don't present visuals to show anybody what it can actually look like. It's not a purple box. It's going to have real-life dirt flying, like all the bulldozers all over this city are doing, based on what you have done by approving things with various colored boxes on flat, one-dimensional screens. And I'm really tired of it, because I don't think any of you up there really fully understand the scope of the decisions you are making to always change your comprehensive plan. A plan is supposed to be that, a plan, and you stick to it. And you don't. You change it, like every week, almost every meeting, you're changing the comprehensive plan. What is the point?
Thank you. Anyone else who was sworn in?
Good evening again, Rudy Rothstein. Thank you all. Thank you all, I appreciate your time. Um, can, can you please put up the, um, more of the GIS map, not, not the colors? Is that a, um, could you put your pointer on the L?
Rudy, address us, please.
I'm addressing you guys, I'm sorry. Can we put the pointer on the, where the L comes?
Can you turn the light off so we can see it a little better?
Closer to 235A, that little dark spot right there, is that, are those trees? Is that water? What, I'm just curious what that is.
It's a tree.
It's a tree?
It is.
Okay. It just, it appears to be water from this, from this vantage. It's hard to tell. I just, my concerns are always, as I've stated earlier, traffic, so, thank you all.
Just to clarify for the commission and the, uh, members of the public in the audience, there's no known water feature or wetland on subject property. If one were to be discovered, uh, all of our applicable standards would apply.
Thank you. Anyone else who was sworn in like to speak?
Hello, Soria Lindberg. I live in a box north of the site plant. Um, there's a lot of beautiful trees back there, and I hope those can stay there for shade and other items. Fortunately, I work from home, but when I do want to grab, go out and grab a coffee or food, there's two turns on the red light to go south and turn left towards the Publix. So going south and east. So right now, there's two turns, you got to wait two turns on the red light to go. When there's more, um, it's going to be worse, but I know, as Carson said, um, we'll figure it out the final development order. It's not now, so I feel like we, we push it off, and I'm not here to stop development. I know everyone's going to make money, you got land, you want to sell it. But just to be very cautious of that, when you do come to the part where you pick a plan, I do appreciate community commercial having zero dwelling units. That could probably, at nighttime, be better. So, um, yeah, that road segment six and the traffic right now is manageable, um, but a little nervous about where it would go in the future, especially knowing that a hotel was built next to a residence. I don't know, are there any other examples of community commercial properties in Alachua that someone in the room could tell me? Of course, I'll never be copy and paste. What are some other examples of community commercial that could go there or have happened around? I also just, I tear up a little when I saw the definition of what it's changing from for preserving the rural character and small-town charm of Alachua. Hopefully, we can still drive around and see some grass and trees. I moved here from Apocal, Florida, lived there most of my life. My husband was born and raised there, and 40 years ago, he said there was cows everywhere, there was hay, his childhood was just running in the grass and having weirdest thing, smell of cow manure is nostalgic to him. So when we moved here, we were going to live in Gainesville, but that one drive down 441 to Alachua, like this is the place. Like, our stress immediately left our body, just the green, the land, um, and then getting more involved in noticing how many things are popping up. You know, it's out of my control, it's going to happen, but I'm just a little nervous about our city turning into a parking lot, because now Apocal is nothing but strip malls and development. We left three acres there to come here, so I am not a surveyor, but it doesn't look like five acres to me, so it'll be interesting to see what happened there. So, just the only person from my neighborhood to show up and let you guys know that we're a little nervous, as other things can said, but, um, we know thing, change is going to happen, but... a little nervous, as other things can said, but we know change is going to happen, but appreciate that it is community commercial for now. But again, I also don't know what that means. So if there are other examples in the county of what community commercial turned into, it would be appreciated.
Thank you. That intersection is going to have, just like the other side where Wawa is, is going to have to be redone also. So anyone else who was sworn in?
My name is Jacob Fletcher. So you guys have done a great job already. It's a pretty, you know, open and shut case on this one, like the applicant said. You know, basically, you have agricultural surrounded by commercial, but do we remember how we got here? We kind of used a checkerboard pattern with our annexations and our zoning to get to this. And so for this, you know, with our state preemptions on how we're supposed to treat this, yes, you know, by the book at this moment, this should be approved. But what my issue is, is how we got here, okay? Is this continuous changing of our comp plans and our future land use maps. And one of the things we talked about was... was what is it going to look like, right? We talk about commercial, and we talk about that. And we're changing that because we see what's around it. But the... I'm really having a hard time understanding this vision when we're constantly changing our own city's comp plans on this. Because if that is our vision as a city, we need to adhere to it. But what I'm seeing is either we're changing it to fit this new vision that we're not aware of, or there were a lot of mistakes made, and us continuously changing it is our attempt to fix it. Another thing on this is there was a question regarding, or there's a concern regarding car sensitivity. And there was a reference to the LDRs. My question is, for the LDRs at this time with this report, who is the, you know, final say whether there's a dispute on that? So I would really question that, because, you know, as of right now, we don't have a certified planner or a director for our planning and zoning department. So any questions or disputes on that for the LDRs? I'm trying to understand who is the final say on those questions, whether it's the attorney or the city manager, who makes the final calls on that. So that's something I'm trying to understand with this. And that's it. Thank you.
We do have a certified planner right here. You are. And, you know, it's taken a long time for things to happen in the city of Alachua. I've been here for quite a long time, and I've watched things being done. And it took a long time to get some restaurants, get some work done on Main Street like we have, get some businesses that are good to the city of Alachua, and our schools. We have the whole school system through here, kindergarten through college, and we work with them on a regular basis and with the school board. And I just, you know, I understand if you move here and you live in certain areas, you can't do anything, but that's not right either. You can do things. And people, if they have land and they want to do something with it in a good way, they should be allowed to do it. And if it's zoned that way, and the way this is, the church and everything used to be there, that's a perfect intersection right there for different businesses and everything like that. But I just want to say, I don't take this personally or anything, what people say about what we're doing, but I think that we do look into this in a very good way, and we just don't do anything. We have fought adult bookstores and all kinds of stuff like that. We fought that to keep them out of our community. And we want good businesses here, not those kind of businesses. And if you weren't here, a lot of you weren't here when we fought that. And so I just want to let you know, I think we do good things here. So with that, anyone else that was sworn in would like to say something? So, first of all, I'd like to... Would you like to say anything more?
Yes, Commissioner, I would just like to first clarify my qualifications. I'm an AICP candidate. I have not yet been certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. Secondly, I did want to just run through a couple of the concerns that were brought up during public comment regarding what some of our standards look like, including for the community commercial district, regarding the purpose of the community commercial district. Quote, "Because these commercial uses are subject to public view, they should provide appropriate appearance." Section 6.8 Design Standards for Business Uses of our Land Development Regulations covers appropriate appearance. Quote, "Adequate parking." Section 6.1 Off-Street Parking and Loading Standards covers adequate parking. Controlled traffic movement is also covered by Section 6.1 Off-Street Parking and Loading Standards, as well as Section 6.8 Business Design Standards. Suitable landscaping is covered by our Section 6.2 Tree Protection and Landscape Standards. Appropriate pedestrian facilities is also covered by Off-Street Parking and Loading Standards. And then protect abutting residential areas from adverse impacts. We have a full Section 6.6 regarding infill development next to existing residential districts, including contextual height requirements within 100 feet, which should eliminate any issues with four-story buildings locating adjacent to existing residential. And then regarding what some typical uses in the community commercial district may look like, this was included in the staff report to the Planning and Zoning Board and included in the agenda item for you all tonight, as well as for the public to view. Some typical uses, not a full inclusive list, although an all-inclusive list is available in the appendix and in our Land Development Regulations to the staff report. Community services such as libraries, senior centers, youth club facilities, childcare centers, education facilities, government offices, post offices, healthcare facilities, nursing homes, religious institutions, parks and open areas, public safety uses such as fire stations and police stations, minor utilities, animal sales, service and care, eating establishments, offices, recreation, entertainment, indoor, retail sales and services, self-service storage, gasoline sales, taxi cab service, tire sales and mounting, and hotel or motel. However, each of those uses does have their own use-specific standards that may preclude them from being built on a property such as this. It's all very contextual, so it's hard to give an exact example of what something might look like on a property. Thank you.
Once again, too, about the question about us changing our rules all the time, we actually have to play by the rules and regulations that are changed each, just about each and every year, and through the county, through the state, and if there's any nationwide type of things that you have to change. We have to be constant on that. If we don't, we could get sued for that. So it takes us a lot of time to go through what's new in each year, so we stay on top of it, and we don't cheat anybody. So I just want to let you know that I'm going to take a vote now. Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Vice Mayor down there?
Aye.
And the Chair of Oversight. Once again, thank you very much. With that, with the agenda items, Resolution 25-07, accepting the annual comprehensive financial management letter for the fiscal year of September 30, 2024, providing an effective date. Again, this is the reading of Resolution 25-07 of the City of Alachua by title only.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. City Manager, Madam City Attorney, Rob Benetti, Finance Administrative Services Director. It's that time of year there where we complete the audit for the prior fiscal year. That would be fiscal year 2024, which ended September 30th of 2024. We have reported, we prepared the financial reports and received an unmodified or clean opinion as pertains to the financial statements of the city. Our auditor is Purvis Gray, Mr. Ron Whiteside's partner, Purvis Gray, is here to go through a very brief explanation of what the audit represents and what was done and the important numbers that are represented in it. And with that, I'll let Mr. Ron Whitesides go over the presentation.
I heard that very brief part, Rob. Sounds like you want to make it to the basketball game. Well, me too. I'll keep it brief. The good news is, when presentations are, things are in great shape, they are brief. When they're not, they get a little longer. But this is the culmination of the audit process. You've got the audit reports in front of you. I'm not going to dig through the big book. Instead, there's an overhead that allows us to touch on things a little more briefly. So what is an audit and what do we do? We conducted a financial audit, obviously, the objective of which is to render an opinion on the accuracy of the financial statements. We issue a report on internal control and compliance in accordance with the various accounting standards and compliance requirements that affect your financial statements. We conducted what is called a federal single audit this year, which I'll talk a bit more about in a moment. And we have to attest to certain items in Florida statute regarding how you handle excess funds. The results of that, as Rob said, we have issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's clean opinion, that's the highest form of assurance we can render. That's what you want to receive. The letter on internal controls and compliance, we have no issues with the processes and controls that the city has in place to gather financial information, to report it to you for your use, to the citizens for their use. So all of the appropriate checks and balances and processes are in place. Likewise, we had no issues of non-compliance. So obviously, a city has a lot of finance-related items to comply with. We don't look at non-finance items, but the finance items, we found no instances of non-compliance. As I mentioned, we conducted a federal single audit. So this year, when you conduct a federal single audit, the purpose of it is you do a deep dive into one or more grant agreements, depending on the risk of the program and the magnitude of it. This year, the ARPA program, the Coronavirus State and Local Recovery Funds Grant Agreement was subject to the single audit. The city expended about $1.9 million of that award this year on water improvements. We had no issues with any of the myriad compliance requirements we look at as part of that. As I mentioned, we also look at your, how you handle investment of excess funds. Florida statute has requirements that require that you not be speculative with excess funds, that you first prioritize liquidity and security of those funds or the rate of return. The city has complied with that. And then we issue a letter to the Auditor General of the State of Florida that addresses various other items, including whether we have any other recommendations to improve financial reporting, or whether the city is in what's called a state of financial emergency, which we have neither. The city is not, and we'll look at the city finances in a moment. And finally, each year during the audit, we do make certain IT recommendations to the city's IT staff. Nothing significant, but we make those recommendations every year and provide them to them. This next slide starts getting into some items that are not perhaps evident from the financial statements themselves, but that auditors are supposed to make those charge of governance aware of. This slide is talking about estimates. So not everything in the financial statements is historic fact. We do have various estimates. The biggest ones are the last two, the net pension liability and the OPEB liability. The city hires actuaries that calculate those. We review those calculations. They are very large estimates, and they do change quite a bit from year to year, but those are included in the financial statements. Some other insight into the audit process, you didn't change any of your accounting policies this year. You didn't enter any transactions that we had to make up accounting guidance for. Your financial statement disclosures are all appropriate for a Florida municipality. We did, and this one's important, we did not have any significant audit adjustments. So if your auditors are coming in and making major changes to your accounting records, then that's an indication that the internal processes aren't functioning the way they should. As has been the case the last several years, we had no significant audit adjustments. So the management team is doing a very good job of, again, properly accounting for the city's transactions and capturing those. And we had no other significant difficulties in performing the audit. We were out here in December doing the audit. We finished this report in March, got on the agenda for this meeting. If there was issues in the audit, the turnaround doesn't happen that quickly, you know? There's a statutory deadline of June 30th. We'll have some clients that don't make that deadline this year because of, you know, issues in their process. The city continues to do a very good job of closing the books, getting ready for audit every year. That's really as much or more work as what we do, is the work that goes into getting ready for the audit. Okay, these numbers are a little small on the screen, but this is the general fund and an income statement of the general fund. And what we... These numbers come straight out of the audit report. We've got the current year column, 2024, prior year, 2023, and the change. The first blue row there, total revenues, you'll see the total revenues are in fact down from the prior year. That is primarily due to...
Sir, could you speak to the mic just a little bit better?
Yeah.
They've seen a less, yeah.
Right, right, sorry.
You might have to bend over a little bit.
Well, the problem is, is yes, I'm looking at this and right...
Sure.
Trying to speak into the mic, but I'll effort to do better. Total revenues are down a couple hundred thousand dollars. The driver of that is that other line item where you see a decrease in revenues. That's because in 2023, there was the true lease settlement. So that drove up the miscellaneous revenues in 2023. You'll see somewhat offsetting that is the increase in tax revenue. So there was both a half a mil, roughly, mileage increase in 2024, as well as a valuation, you know, of taxable value increase to the property and the city limits, driving the tax line increase. On expenses, the total expenses are the second blue row. Total expenses are up 1.6 million, I believe that says, the majority of which in general government and public safety. That is payroll and benefit increases, both raises and increase in headcount, as we would expect, right? Most of the cities that cost non-capital are payroll-related. After transfers into the general fund, that's the net transfers from the utilities, the utilities transfer over about $2 million, the general fund transfers some of that money to other funds. But after that, the fund operated at $280,000 excess for the year of revenues over costs. This is the balance sheet of the general fund, and so the assets are primarily cash investments at 11.5 million, up a half million dollars from the prior year. There's about $1 million of short-term obligations and payables, things of that nature. The difference between the two is fund balance. You can see total fund balance increased, same 283,000 income for the year. 5.6 million of that is what's called unassigned. That's available for any governmental purpose. You see 4.4 million as assigned. That's committed to the 2025 budget process. So it's been earmarked to potentially be spent in 2025. Sometimes the question is asked, well, what's an appropriate level of fund balance? The Government Finance Officers Association has a benchmark of at least two months of operating expenses. We've calculated there, you're at about 39%. That's about four and a half months. So you, by that benchmark, you are in good financial condition. And then we'll take a look at the enterprise funds. So you can see that total revenues are up around $900,000 in the enterprise funds, most of that coming from water and wastewater, where there are both volume and rate increases in 2024. You'll notice that electric revenues are actually down. That is cost of power-driven. So cost of power is a pass-through for the electric utility, so the bills to the city go up or down based on the cost to generate the power of the generators, and then you pass that on to your customer. So when there's a decrease in the cost of power, there is a corresponding decrease in bills to the customers that drove the revenue decrease. There was a kilowatt-hour sales increase, but the cost has come down in total. As with governmental activities, total costs are up a few hundred thousand dollars. Most of the increases, you can see, are in personnel and... Most of the increases you can see are in personnel and billing and admin, which is also largely personnel. So again, as we'd expect, raises, increases in headcount drive those. When we get down just below operating income, there is a non-operating income item that you can see has changed significantly. It's a positive two and a half million dollars this year versus a negative 160,000 last year. This is a netting of various things. The main items in here are interest on long-term debt. That's why it was negative last year. There was more interest on long-term debt than there were revenues. The reason it's turned positive this year is there are quite a bit of grant revenue being reported in that line item. So the 1.9 million of the ARPA funds that I mentioned are being used for the water projects, and I think about $700,000 of DEP grant revenue used in wastewater projects. So that is a big part of what is driving the total income for the year. After transfers to the general fund, you can see that it's approximately $5 million. When we look at the assets and liabilities of the enterprise funds, the first thing you'll notice is that the current assets, which are primarily cash and receivables, are actually down. So the reason that is, after a $5 million income year, is that those funds are being plowed into infrastructure, right? So there was a use of cash to build more infrastructure. So you see capital assets are up, up over $4 million after depreciation. So there was more like $6 million of additions to infrastructure this year. That was electric system, water system, and wastewater system. Liabilities likewise, you'll see, are down $2 million. Again, that's a use of cash. This is the spend-down of the ARPA funds, which you had on hand. We treat it as an obligation until you've earned those monies. So you see the non-current liabilities decreased to half million dollars. That's your normal pay-down of long-term debt used to construct some of the infrastructure assets. And then we get to the net position, the vast majority of which is called investment and capital assets. That's the equity you have in the electric system, the water system, the wastewater system, not spendable. And then there is $12 million of unrestricted net position. So that is a measure of expendable resources. And again, as a percent of annual expenditures, it's well in excess of the, of the two-month guideline. One thing I always like to say about that is, is while the guideline is a nice tool for looking at financial numbers, it doesn't tell you anything about the condition of the system, right? Your growth needs, the infrastructure condition, anything like that. So you kind of have to take it in, in with a grain of salt when you consider, you know, the health of the, the whole system. And that is it. Again, I'd just like to say thanks to Rob and his team for getting ready for the audit and doing a great job as they have done for several years, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the presentation.
Would you say again into the mic, what level we got at the end of this year, this last year, I mean?
What level you got?
Yeah.
What's the...
Excellence.
I don't use the word excellence.
Oh, I know. But there's only one level in the state of Florida.
Yeah. The team, the team is doing a, a very good job getting ready for us each year. They're a pleasure to work with. They're prepared and enable us to get this wrapped up and issued very quickly, yeah.
Thank you for the whole time you've been here, too, and it's been, and you, you look over things with a fine-tooth comb, and I appreciate that very much.
Right. Well, we always see you during the audit. You know the team of auditors we have in here for a week or two doing the work, although saying all these nice things about Rob, he's going to be hard to live with.
We forgive you.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, we will be submitting this audit report to GFOA yet again. I have not brought it up, but we got our 14th in a row. This would be, this time next year, the 15th. So it, it's a testament to the whole staff, Tyler Williams, Heather Carter, Kaitlin Bales, Regina Reed, and, and all the departments that cooperate with the requirements and what we request, they provide for backup.
14 years, thank you very much for your excellence. I mean, and everybody should... Anything else would you like to add?
Yes, we have to adopt a resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 25-07, accepting the annual comprehensive financial report and management letter for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2024.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Would anyone from the audience like to comment on the motion on the floor?
I'm supposed to wait to be recognized, so that's why I'm following the rules. My name's Tamara Robbins, Mr. Mayor, Commissioned Staff Attorney. Thank you, Mr. Whitesides, for your presentation. I have a couple of questions. I'm wondering how much, how much money was invested? What does the, what is the money invested in? I know he said it can't be speculative, but I'd like to know what exactly you are investing the public money in. Also, I'd like to know if any of the revenue that's included in any of these line items is, is a result of impact fees? Because there's a lot of money being spent on water lines, sewer lines, and electric lines, and I didn't need any of that in my neighborhood, but you're sure spreading it all over the place using tax revenue that I pay and everybody in the community does to put in new infrastructure for new development. So I'm wondering how much of that money collected and used for those expenditures is from impact fees? So if you could clear that up. Also, I know that the county requires a separate audit to happen of the Surtax revenue, the Wild Spaces Public Paces, and I'm wondering if that was part of this? That's required from the Oversight Board. And then I was looking through the, so that's another question, was the Surtax money audited separately, supposed to be? How the money's invested? How much of the revenue you, that's collected is from impact fees from new development? And what do you, how much was earned in, in the investments that you got? Hopefully, it was invested wisely and it resulted in some additional revenue. And then I'm wondering, what do you do with that revenue? Do you just reinvest it, or do you spend it, invest it on the community infrastructure, like fixing potholes and roads, or cleaning out gutters and doing stuff like that, which I would like to see that money used for? On one of the pages back there in the back folder or binder, it says, it's talking about the water utility. It says, "The quality of the city's water supply is such that chlorination and fluoridation are the only treatments required before public distribution." I want to know, you guys, we put fluoride in their water? I didn't know that. Well, I want to know, is it required? Because some communities say, "I don't want fluoride in my water." You can get it a hundred other ways. You shouldn't be putting crap in the water. And it also references the reclaimed water, and it says it's available to be resold, which right now, we're under contract with a biomass plant, and they take all of the reclaimed water. So I'm wondering if that's a change? If that contract has expired or what's going on with that? Is it actually available to be resold? So if you could clear those up for me?
I'll do my best to keep up with this. Let me begin, there, there are no impact fees in the city. Investments, about 1.8 million is invested with SBA and, and money markets and CD. The rest is, is earning interest in general bank accounts in the city. We have bank accounts with Capital City Bank. We have capital, bank accounts with Renasant, and we have bank accounts with, oh boy, sorry, South State, yes, I'm sorry. They're in Gainesville now, I'm sorry. They moved. As far as what's done with the interest, this report shows what interest earnings are pretty much under miscellaneous. A lot, the majority of, usually the majority is miscellaneous, but I can tell you, investment earnings are about 1% of the revenue sources. They are budgeted for every year, and so they are used for items that are approved in the budget. We just don't go out and reappropriate or appropriate interest nilly-willy. We do it during the budget process. I think I answered most, oh, Wild Spaces. Wild Spaces is not required to be audited separately. It is required to be audited as a fund, and it is identified in the report by itself, as are all special revenue funds. We do quarterly reports to the Wild Spaces Oversight Committee, and we are yet to get a bad review. They haven't asked for us to return any money or pay back any money because we are using the funds appropriately. I hope I answered all the questions I, I was trying to keep up with.
Don't yell from the back there.
The fluoride is, is, is a public services issue. We produce a report every year about the water quality, and it's required to be, for the, as I know it, it's required to be put into the water.
And the reuse water back was given away free to...
And that's not being used much, Mr. Mayor. The, the biomass plant is, is not utilizing our water.
All right, can I finish?
I apologize.
No. Back a long time, we used to spray it out on the backside of the, the plant. And so then we put a line down to Turkey Creek, you know, and they could use it to keep their ponds filled up, and that was free. When the GRU built a biomass plant, Swanee River Water knew that that reuse line was down there. They made them continue that line at their own expense over to the wood burning plant to cool their pipes and all that sort of stuff. And we had to come up with a price tag on that, which was 10 cents per 10,000 gallons or whatever. We had to do that, and, and anybody that uses reused water gets the same price. So Turkey Creek has to pay also to, to use the reused water. But you're right, the biomass plant is not being used hardly at all anymore, but they still, when they're used the water, they have to pay for it. So that's been good for us, but I wish that they would shut that down and we could go back to giving free reused water away. But that's not, we can't do that. So I just want, that's part of the problem with the reused water, is being used, it's just that it's being charged to... Thank you. All right, we will need to... We need to get any more questions about what was the, the resolution?
Good evening. My name's Jacob Fletcher. Just a question to clarify, we spent one...
Can you turn that mic up so we hear?
Yeah, yeah. Is that better? Yeah. We spent $1.9 million in ARPA funds for COVID on water infrastructure. It's 2025 now, so I'm assuming that is the new well that we're doing, the new well line, I'm assuming, if someone can clarify that? Because right now, our concurrency for our water usage for potable water and water quality is at 90%. So I'm assuming that's what, where we spent this $1.9 million on. And a question also on that is, how much of that is already going to be pending allocation with our pre-plats, which we have about 40 of, that are waiting for that line to come in to pick that usage of, I believe was a million gallons? So how much of that is going on with that? That's just really curious, because it's been five years for that stuff, and we spent a lot of money, and it seems like it's going to already be spoken for.
Mr. Mayor, the 1.9 million is, is for the water wellhead. As far as the concurrency issues, and I can, Mr. Valdairis will address those.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, City Attorney. My name is Rodolfo Valdairis. I'm the Assistant City Manager for the City of Alachua. In reference to the well, the reason the wellhead is being installed now is for reliability and resiliency for the City of Alachua. The city has a CUP permit with Swanee River Water Management, and that remains the same. Concurrenty is against the CUP. This allows us to operate and serve our residents with better quality water and be more resilient. In the past, we've had issues with water quality when hurricanes hit, and in response to that, that's why this wellhead is going in. Does that answer your question, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I think it does answer the question, but you know, I, what I always appreciated about our staff and everything, they look to the future. You can't wait till you're 10,000 gallons short of feeding the rest of the people. You have to think ahead and start at maybe 65% or 60%. Then you got to start planning for the future. You can't wait to the last minute. So I appreciate everything that our public works have done, our staff has done, keeping up with ahead of the time as opposed to waiting too long. Thank you so much. Anyone else like to comment on the motion on the floor? Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I just want to say to Mr. Benetti, and thank you, sir, for your presentation. We always look forward to that. Mr. Benetti, please express my thanks and sincere gratitude to your staff. I know some of them are here. We appreciate all that you do. You always come forth in an extraordinary manner, so thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
All right, Resolution 25-08.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the reading of Resolution 25-08, a resolution of the City of Alachua, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2024-2025 general fund budget for the receipt of unanticipated revenue, increasing the general fund Alachua Police Department budget to appropriate revenues and expenses related to an Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Award received from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, providing an effective date. This is the reading of Resolution 25-08 of the City of Alachua, by title only.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, excuse me, Commissioners, Mr. City Manager, Madam City Attorney. Tyler Williams, Accounting Manager for the City of Alachua. The Alachua Police Department recently received an Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Award from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. The awarded grant is for the purchase of a motorcycle and is in the amount of $25,920. A resolution and budget amendment are necessary to account for the revenues and expenditures associated with the grant funding.
Questions or comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, I know we always appreciate this Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant every year. I know it's never given, and I appreciate the fact that Chief is, Chief and his staff pursue other sources of revenue where they can. So in saying that, I move to adopt Resolution 25-08.
Anyone else?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Would anyone from the audience like to comment on the motion on the floor? Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We go into round two. If you didn't get a chance at the first time and want to now, comments from citizens shall be of choice, not on the agenda. Did you not speak at the first time?
I did not, sir.
Okay.
My name's Tamara Robbins. At the previous City Commission meeting, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, Mr. DeRosa stated something in the line of that Justin Tabor, the city planner, that... something in the line of that Justin Tabor, the city planner that resigned, was one of the most intelligent people that he's ever had the pleasure of working with. And I appreciate that, that the city manager said that. And that's going to lead me to the fact that in Mr. Tabor's letter, he stated that as the city manager, DeRosa, is the LDR Administrator, that he informed the planning staff that he had made an interpretation that the proposed solar facility was a, quote, "similar project" to those as stated in section 1.4.5, whatever. My concern is that Mr. DeRosa did not put that interpretation in writing, and the LDRs referenced that interpretations that are taken on the liberty of the LDR Administrator should be put in writing, or they may be put in writing. Mr. DeRosa did not. This was a verbal determination regarding a 50-acre parcel of city-owned property to be clear-cut of forested land for a solar array. I say that again. Clear-cut, live oaks, old growth forestry on this, for a solar array. And the city manager declares that it is not subject to present a site plan, to not come before the city commission for approval, that he has the power, given to him through the LDRs, to make a verbal determination that that can happen. And Mr. Rodolfo was part of that discussion too with Mr. Tabor and the planners. So I'm here to ask you, as a city commission, to request, Mr. Mayor, could you please pay attention? You know, it's disrespectful.
I'm hearing everything you said.
God. To request that the city manager provide a determination in writing regarding the clear cutting of a 50-acre parcel of property for a solar array. This deserves a public hearing. It should be in a site plan. In fact, it should not happen. And the people in this community are getting sick and tired of clear-cutting. And if you go out in the community and talk to them, they're sick of it. I'm sick of it. So, Mr. City, Mr. Mayor and Commission, please ask the city manager to put his determination in writing. I put in a public records request. There is not one in writing. And I will take my position as a citizen through the LDRs and submit a request myself and go through the process if you don't. But you should do this for the citizens, and transparency, as Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Potts, Commissioner Potts says he campaigns on transparency. Let's see it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Did you get a chance at the beginning?
Good evening. Rudy Rothseiden, I'd like to start off with saying, "Go Gators." I have, we have a very fun evening this evening. We'll all be actively watching. Just rehashing some of the last meeting, there was a, there was a lot that was said, but nothing was accomplished. That was the most frustrating part about that meeting in my mind. We are, when the motion did not pass to accept Jacob's engineering, I was hoping to hear from one of our Commissioners to step up and say, "Well, this is a problem we still need to solve. How are we going to solve this problem?" Hopefully, we would maybe put some more money towards advertising. Hopefully, we would maybe increase incentives for hiring another city planner. There was a comment made that this is what anti-growth looks like. I would beg to differ that we put ourselves in a situation, and it's not a anti-growth situation. We are growing as a city. We have 4,500 homes that are plotted. We have more and more that are, that land that is changing. We are growing. We have new businesses appearing every day. I still go back to, let me, I've got a lot of notes here. So I also just want to reiterate, no matter what, no matter what a citizen's involvement is in activities in our community, each and every one of them has an equal opportunity and equal voice to you as a commission. You know, some people are bedridden. They cannot make it into these meetings. Some of them cannot volunteer and help. You know, yes, I agree that, you know, good work means value to what you do and what you say in this community, but every voice counts. I'd like to thank the city manager and all the Commissioners and the city attorney for voicing their opinions, and thank you for, Mr. Manager, for saying that you were willing to be more open and communicative, and I hope to see that to continue. I, as well, would like to echo what Mrs. Robbins has said about the solar project that is concerning. There's a lot of already clear-cut land in our city, and why would we want to cut down 40 to 50 acres, whatever it may be, to put in a solar field? I'm all about solar. I love it. I think it's a great, great source of energy, but to cut down trees and not have any treatment or site plans is disturbing. You know, there's been contradictions or questions about whether the validity of Mr. Tabor's letter, but there's still, to me, questions that have not been answered from that. I wish those Commissioners that are running tomorrow very good luck, and I hope you do well, and thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else that didn't get a chance at the beginning? Who's that? City Manager, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quickly, I concur with Mr. Rothseiden about the game most of us want to get to, but I just wanted to mention that, I was honored to be a part of the T-Mobile Hometown Grant. That the city was honored with $50,000 grant that will go directly toward the beautification of Theater Park. It was well-attended. I thought Main Street businesses attended very well. The T-Mobile team was as enthusiastic as any team that I've seen in quite some time, and enthusiastic about investing in our community. I want to congratulate Abigail Carville for her appointment to the Youth Advisory Council. I would be remiss if I did not congratulate Mr. Benetti and his entire Finance Administrative Services crew. If you've ever taken part or participated in trying to go through an audit, it is serious business, and I would not trade the staff that we have for any other staff. And congratulate just on yet another unmodified audit. And, Mr. Mayor, last but not least, "Go Gators."
Go Gators.
Commissioner Williams?
No comments. "Go Gators."
Hey, it's not until 9:00. We've got an hour. Shirley?
Thank you. My thanks to Pastor Marco for the prayer tonight. My gratitude to all the citizens for your comments. Keep coming. I love having input. I love seeing you out there, because I know that you care about this city. So thank you for being here. The chamber meeting was great. The senior advisory board held a very productive and effective meeting. So our thanks to the board for their service. Our deepest sympathy is extended to the Pathé family. Gloria Pathé was a longtime resident of this community, and many of our youth called her grandmother, because she fed them before games, after games, during games. So we will miss her. The services will be Saturday, April 12th at 2:00, and the viewing is Friday, April 11th at St. Luke Church. So please keep the family in your thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I've been here quite a long time, and it was only one square mile when I moved here. And when I talk to people, my son had to do this too. You either worked at a gas station, or you worked on the farm, or you went to Gainesville. You had to drive to Gainesville to get a job, and they weren't allowed there either. And when I talk to people in the community about what they'd like to see happen, they'd like, they wanted their kids not to move away from, some of them had to move away from Florida and the Gainesville area to get a job. And they wanted, they didn't have to live in Alachua, but they wanted them to have a job that they could support themselves and be close enough to their families so they could all be together, you know, on good holidays and things like that. And we did. We started making good progress on jobs and expanding it to the, we took in the interstate, which is very important, because that helped us put rules and regulations there that were good for that area right there. And what I said before about adult bookstores and all that sort of stuff, we did away with all that, so they couldn't get there. And I just want to say, I'm proud of the jobs that are here and the people that have them. Their kids can work. They can stay here if they want to. But I hear, when I walk neighborhoods and talk to people, they love living here, and I just really appreciate it. I do too. I've been here for 50 years, and it's been a godsend to me. It's the best thing that ever happened to me, and I'm not going to let anybody tell me any different. But I just want to say I'm proud of Alachua. We also, 2023, and I think until about now, we've had the lowest electric rates in the state of Florida. I hope you appreciate that. It really makes a difference. And last week, I was at Life South Blood Bank on Newbury Road, and they've been doing this for every year, and what they give out, appreciation, I put some on the back table back there, is that the City of Alachua, with the blood they gave, saved over 3,200 lives, and it makes a huge difference to our community. And what I'd like to do is make a challenge to the Alachua Business League and the Chamber, and to everybody in the City of Alachua, let's double that mark for next year. And it, giving blood does not hurt. It might scare you a little bit, but it does not hurt. And when you walk away from there, you feel really good about the people that you've helped. I mean, you really do. And if you give it on a regular basis, we can, we can double that amount and really do something good for our community. But anyway, I just, like I said, I think we have a lot of good things going on in the City of Alachua, and I'd like everybody in this room, and not in, and same way with the City of Alachua, to get involved in a positive way in the city. You can see things, you can complain like crazy, but get involved in a positive way in our community and help make a difference. And I'm asking you to do that, and then you won't have to complain or anything like that, but you can do something positive, and it does work. Our Alachua Business League, our Chamber, the City of Alachua Legacy, they need volunteers. They need people to get there. They're going to have a mega, kids mega sale again up at Legacy, and that brings in thousands of kids and parents and everything like that to get clothes and everything, toys and everything like that. So learn what's going on that's positive here and be involved with that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interrupt. I think we inadvertently skipped over Vice Mayor.
I am sorry. You were sitting next to me, that's why. I'm sorry.
No, no issues at all. I want to thank the folks who commented tonight, and I want to specifically mention Ms. Lindberg, because when you said that was the first time you'd ever done that, you did an outstanding job, both times that you came up. You had your information and your data. You thanked Carson Crockett for helping you to understand and to kind of find a solution to that. So terrific job. And for those that push us and ask for transparency, I mean, we should be transparent, right? I don't think anybody doesn't like the idea of transparency. So we need tough questions sometimes to push us forward on issues that are important to our city and to move us forward in a better way. The rest of my comments, I'll just agree with what my fellow Commissioners said in regards to our Finance Department and Rob Benetti and that crew, that they do an amazing job. Thank you, and "Go Gators."
Thank you. And what's your pleasure?
Move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you all for being here.